I think it's working.
Mine in a way.
So to start, we originally had kids coming, but they ended up having to do lacrosse practice and other things. So it shows that over our school meeting. So we have our fabulous. Both of you don't know me. I'm a Tati Cole, a Spanish teacher. And I presented earlier this year about how we, one of our goals of the DEIJ committee was to have something that was kid, run by kids and giving a chance for kids to participate and express opinions. So I started a club by just introducing to the middle schoolers that there would be a club of some sort along those themes. And that they would get to decide how, what kind of focus it was going to be. So the first club meeting had one person show up and she was very passionate and still is very passionate about DEIJ issues. She had a lot to say. She stayed through recess. She spoke about things more eloquently than I could. It was amazing. And I said to her at the end, if it's just me and you, do you still want to do it? And she said, absolutely. So the next time we had a meeting, 12 kids came and we've then whittled down to a core seven kids that are really into it. Some of them are very quiet and you can see they're just sort of like taking everything in. But my approach was kind of a non-approach. They sort of, I'm sort of just there to keep it, you know, keep it going and not go off the rails. They are disappointed when 20 minutes is over. They want to keep talking. They have a lot that they're interested in. I let them pick the focus. They're focusing on the inclusion part of that. They're very concerned with kids here feeling included and they see that the importance of inclusion in the world as a whole. And the kinds of things that they want to learn more about and that they're afraid, I think that's not the right word. They're concerned that certain populations aren't feeling included in the world. They talk a lot about, and I think it's because they don't know a lot about it themselves. They talk a lot about people with Down syndrome. They want to learn more. They want there to be more books about that. They, they just want to know more and feel, make people feel included in the world. So things have come up, Down syndrome, neurodivergent people, the LGBTQ population, people with mental health challenges, and people from other countries. They're just very curious. They want people to feel included and welcome. So one thing that they decided to do is we just had an author come from India. Well, it was a, we had a visiting author and all the kids in the school had read a book by her. And my kids put together this presentation. They were very, they were very concerned that the little kids would say something that would not make her feel included and welcomed. So, and it was very hands-off and unpolished because I just let them just do. So this is the little slideshow they made. They wanted to show the kids where India was. They had like a little globe and they showed that it was on the other end of the world. They talked about the size. Then they wanted to share pictures. And they talked to the little kids about like, we don't know the author. She may come dressed in clothes, clothing like this from India or she may come in clothes similar to what we wear. We don't know, but we don't want to say anything and make her feel, you know, like she's not welcome here. So they went over some of this and they wanted to make sure that the little group didn't say anything like, that's weird or ew, whatever. So I had asked, this isn't actually an activity I had done with them earlier and they were like, we gotta do that for the little kids. They were really concerned little kids would, would say something off. So they practiced doing this with the little kids and they did a skit. They wrote a skit. And, and it was, it was pretty cute. Actually, it was good. And then they, you know, they practiced using these kinds of terms for when something is different. When, when you're talking to someone from a different culture, when you're talking to someone from a different community. So, and it's funny because, you know, they're all still learning too, the kids in the group. So I, I gotta call them out every now and then. I'm like, hmm, maybe this is a good time to try one of the phrases. And then I can hear them changing their, they're like, oh yes, um, that's not for me. That's, but that's, but that's, I can see that you might like it. They, so they're, they're learning and they're trying and I don't know what they want to do next, but they've already asked me what's up for next year. And as you know, I'm retiring. So someone else will hopefully take over the club. And because they want to do it, they're already asking me if they can do it again. It's just been a nice place for them to talk about topics that they don't usually talk about in class too. They hear somebody make a comment on the bus and they want to talk about it. You know, just kind of gave them a space to, to do that. So anyway, they're also just, they're excited. They're like, is it club today? I'm like, no, not this week. So they like, they like doing it. So anyway, I was also going to share just a little bit about Spanish before, before I go today. But do you have any questions about the inclusion?
Sorry that we didn't get to hear them share in person because that's lovely. But I, I can envision what those conversations would have looked like between older students and younger students. And it's, it's very endearing.
Has been coming. So yeah. All right. And then I just, you know, while I have you, it's the end of the year and the eighth graders are doing projects and assessments based on all of their learning from all their years here. And I won't read it in Spanish because you won't know what I'm saying, but I will read you part of, or maybe you will. I don't know. But I will read it in English. Just so my eighth grader just did a big writing assessment. The prompt was, it's what they use in Amesbury. So it's the Amesbury final exam entrance. You know, so you can place the kids in the right classes. Basically, the situation is someone wrote them a letter, someone from Honduras wrote them a letter and wants to get to know them. And then they have to write that on many different subjects. And so the last couple paragraphs have to do with what you like to eat and what you do in your food. So the level of detail that they can do really astounds me. They use all kinds of transition words and tie together concepts. So like this is, instead of you saying like, I like chicken, this is, this is what this person can write. My favorite food is chicken. Also, I like ice cream cookies, salad and rice. I don't like eggs or bacon. Sometimes I eat pancakes with strawberries. I drink water a lot because my mother says that water is very important. Sometimes I drink tea or milk, but I prefer soda. I mean, just that they have that much vocabulary and can string those things together. In my free time, I play a lot of sports. I play basketball and softball. On Saturdays, I go to the movie theater with my family to watch movies. Sometimes I go to the beach, but never in the winter. My friends like to go to the science museum in Boston. My family likes to go to my grandmother's house. In the spring, my friends, my family and I all like to go to the mountains. Do you like to go to the mountains? I was just super impressed that they can pull all kinds of vocabulary from all kinds of years here and they're learning. And I was really proud of, I've been really proud of them. You should have, but yeah. So I just want to share a little Spanish with you while I have your attention. But yeah.
I have a question. Do they ever like talk to kids from, you know, like Honduras or wherever, like these countries?
I haven't arranged that, no. But I mean.
Is that a thing that's done? Because I remember, I remember hearing about this program. It was actually for, it was kids who wanted to learn English, but were in Brazil and they would talk to all the retired people here. And they would just like speak to them in English and eventually, you know, they would kind of learn. And like, I'm sure they're probably learning English in some of these classrooms. And like, if you had like maybe 15 minutes where, you know, like on a, I don't know if there's such a thing that exists, like, yeah, there are. Yeah.
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 That'd be good. Yeah. It's good for them to have other accents, other, you know, other than me. This is why I do videos, you know, different videos of people from different countries, different pronunciation. Yeah.
I'll loan you my Spanish exchange student for a day.
You have one now?
Living with us.
Wow, for the whole year?
Yeah.
How is your student?
Sixteen, doing great. Yeah. Yeah. It's interesting. She was quieter at the beginning of the year, but I've noticed now every time, you know, everyone is at home, she's got a lot to say. Which is great, right? Just that confidence, of course, right? She was tired at the beginning of the year, right? You're, you're on overload, right? Speaking a different language the majority of your day, but you know, this is what happens for these students, right? They begin to acquire those skills and as they practice it more, they gain that confidence and experience that they.
Yeah.
Leadership ability.
Yeah. She's probably exhausted. It's exhausting at first, when even when you've studied for years, you go somewhere and it's just trying to keep up. You're always, your brain's always like a little bit behind, you know, and you're trying to, trying to listen and keep up. Yeah.
I just wanted to say, you've done such an amazing job preparing these kids. I've seen it with my own daughter, but also all of her friends that are up there, they've done amazingly well. And they are above where the other kids are entering up at the high school and they are just done an amazing job. So thank you.
You should be very proud.
And that goes the same, I want to kind of, we get to see.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Of course, it's going to be very hard to replace, not just in Spanish. Thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we should move into reorganization. So I would like to go for nominations for a chair.
I would like to nominate Alex as board chair.
All of those in favor? It is unanimous. It is your meeting. I apologize for being late. We had a second. We had a nomination and a second and then they all voted in favor.
No, no, that's, I mean. But at the same time, I was totally happy if somebody else.
For the long haul.
I don't want to, you know, hog the leadership.
Hogg, yours.
All right. So now we will do the appointment of the board vice chair. Which one you led last, last year?
I don't know.
Nerds would know that, right?
I don't know.
Last year, I believe it was you last year because Becky was doing the joint board.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to nominate Becky Burdick for vice chair of the Southampton School Board.
Yes, they're all in favor.
Somebody else was saying that. Yeah, I'm in if you want to, if you want to share. All right. So we got that. Now we got committee appointments. All right. So.
I'm going to do my best. I know Becky served on operations last year because she was the board chair. So that meeting is five times a year prior to the joint board meeting to set the agenda for the joint board.
Okay.
I mean, I don't mind staying on it. It doesn't really matter. I don't have to chair it. I don't have to be.
Okay.
An alternate. I can be the alternate.
Okay. So we'll make a motion to nominate.
You can do it all at once if you want.
Yep.
Just do them all together.
All together? Okay, sounds good. All right. Now, policy committee, you were policy committee last year, right?
I don't think so. I believe I was.
Sure. Sure. I'll keep it again. I don't have small children.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's, that's, yeah.
And then alternate for that.
You have.
I will not be the alternate. Yeah. It doesn't matter.
All right. I can do the alternate for it.
Communications.
I'll keep that.
Okay. We don't have an alternate for that, but I think, I mean, you could if you want to, but if not.
It's easy enough just because if you can't make it, we can still send it.
Budget committee.
That's, I guess that's me. Yeah.
And who's the alternate?
Alex.
I'm my own alternate?
You're saying that's fine.
Yeah.
School Board Association Delegate. That is a once a year meeting. It's usually a Saturday in October. I want to say like somewhere around the 16th of October. I mean, I can do that, I guess.
Okay.
Who was it last time?
I don't know if anybody went.
Probably will go, just so you know.
There you go.
Probably, probably the rev.
You want an alternate?
Probably will be there.
I don't think we need an alternate in that case. That's all.
Okay. Wellness and joint loss.
I'll keep that.
And then an alternate for that.
They can take it.
Usually zoom, I zoom in.
What was this?
That's the wellness joint loss. I zoom in because it's earlier and I can do that right from my classroom.
I'm sorry. Do they, did they really talk about wellness and joint?
So there, so wellness is the nutrition policy, those kinds of pieces. And then joint loss is statutory required, meaning that looks at Department of Labor required.
Okay, I'm like.
To look at if there are incident, injury, workplace injuries, incident, safety.
That makes more sense.
Yeah.
Well, it just sounds so.
Newer side, right?
Focus, you know?
Where, yeah, we really get into like.
Yeah. Osteoporosis.
Getting that extra calcium.
Yeah.
Extracurricular stipends meets once in June.
That was me and I can keep it. I mean, that's fine.
I think it's better a person with.
With kids here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can be the alternate for that.
You have a better sense. So I'll just read it back. Operations committee is Becky with Lauren as the alternate. Policy is Becky with Alex as the alternate. Communications is Lauren. Budget committee is Alex with Lauren as the alternate. New Hampshire School Board Association is Becky with no alternate, who probably won't go. Wellness and joint loss is Lauren with Alex as the alternate. And then extracurricular stipends is Alex with Lauren as the alternate. And then you could do a motion, could do it all.
Make a motion to accept the appointed positions as nominated for the 2025, 2026 school year.
I'll second that.
All right. We get to go there? Okay. So we will move on to public comments. Just for record. Nope. All right. So. All right. Then let's move on to consideration of the minutes. So.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the minutes written for March 6, 2025.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 19th, 2025 special meeting.
For both.
I'll second it. It wasn't, I was at that one, but no others. All in favor?
Okay, moving on to the March 26th, 25 special meeting. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 26th, 2025 special meeting.
All in favor?
All right. I'm moving on to the March 31st, 2025 special meeting. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 31st, 2025 special meeting.
All in favor?
And finally, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 1st, 2025 special meeting.
Second that. Favor?
Been a lot of special meetings. I don't think I realized. I forgot like how many there were already. Okay. So let's move on to the reports and we will start with your report, Meredith.
Okay. So April 10th is crossover day in the legislature. So we'll be meeting with, in conjunction with SAU 90 and our local legislators on April 21st to discuss remaining bills that have been passed by one body to the other. State assessment, believe it or not, will be coming up after April vacation, which is kind of around the corner. So just a reminder that that will happen and the results will be shared with parents if they're made available by the state. Just highlighting our student leadership team will be, last month, we had a lengthy conversation about artificial intelligence, cybersecurity, data privacy, technology use in general. And it was really interesting just to hear student perspectives on some of those different issues. I think their conception of, or their expectations for privacy are very different, I would say, than ours perhaps as adults. Given that they've grown up in more of the technological age and they're aware of protections, you know, steps they should take to protect themselves and their information. This month, we are going to Primex to meet with one of their leadership trainers. Who's going to spend some time with them, just talking to them about, again, continuing to build and develop their own leadership skills. So looking forward to that. And then I will have just a couple of highlights from Dr. Chumi, Dr. Cassely's report. Dr. Chumi will speak to her own. Yesterday was our SAUI professional development day. We worked with Mirko Chardon really around student ownership of learning and strategies to, to build student ownership so they are more aware of their learning journey and developing their, their skills. A lot of work is continuing with the science team, the grades three through five, three through five representatives met together in March and worked on the ICANN statements, which will be accessible for all of our staff. And then they're also looking at common experiences and expectations for middle schools and the science PLC. And then curriculum coordinators group, which Michelle Metten's on behalf of Barnard, met to review the latest New Hampshire changes to social studies requirements. So making sure that we are aligning that instruction with, with those changes. We'll leave it there and turn it to Dr. Chumi.
I have a couple of items for you this month, a little preview. Next month, I will be doing a presentation, annual presentation on the special education determinations that are given to students annually. April 1st, we received them for Southampton. A little preview is that Southampton is needing every category. So it's really exciting. Thanks to Lynn and Michelle and all the great work that goes on here. So it's really very significant. So we appreciate that. But we, before the determinations came in, we did get a letter regarding indicator four, which is one of the state watches very closely regarding discrepancies in disciplinary data. They want to be sure that those students who are suspended what they call long-term, more than 10 days, that there's no discrepancy between students who are typical achieving and students who have an IEP or have disabilities. And so, or here, where we don't, we haven't had any data that suspends students on either side. There's no discrepancy. And then the other piece, B or B that they look at is, is there a discrepancy based on race? Are we suspending more students of color than who have disabilities than not? And so again, zero, zero. So no discrepancies. The other thing that I wanted to really applaud you for and thank the folks here was a real great effort. We had this opportunity to partner with who we play for, a nonprofit that offered us the screenings, electrocardiogram screenings to identify the potential risk of sudden cardiac arrest near fatal occurrence when it hits adolescents or young adults. We conducted our screenings across the SAU from February 10th to March 10th. All five districts participated. The rate of participation from Barnard School was exceptional. Across the SAU, we had 176 students screened and four of those students were referred for follow-up. In total, since November, when they started offering this in New Hampshire statewide, 398 students have been screened. So, you know, we're happy that a significant number of those were ours statewide. 12 students were identified as moderate risk and two students were found to be high risk. And, you know, they were referred for, for the follow-up. If we can, if our efforts here just caused one family to get what they needed, it's worth the investment of time and, and resources, thanks to the grant. It was a very small investment on the part of families. We'd like to offer it again next year if they'll continue to partner with us. And thank you to this community for stepping up and doing what they did for your, for Tadosa. Great side, side now. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, Michelle.
So our grade four, five students went on a field trip today. They went to Callahan Shepherd Discovery Center as part of their science curriculum or space. They had a great time, doing some activities. They went to a mentor show, so they were back to college, advised. For professional development, as Meredith mentioned, we had a professional development day yesterday. The staff really joined. It was a great presentation and they came back really excited about the UDL practices. Another thing that we're doing as a school is, you know, we booked, we do like data dives, looking at our assessments. And something that was lacking a little bit in our school was vocabulary, not unique to the school. It's pretty common everywhere. So we really are focusing on vocabulary instruction this year. We started doing a book club on Bringing Words to Life by Elizabeth Beck. That we're working on research-based practices and how to implement these practices to improve student vocabulary. And that's going really well. We've had some really great discussions and teachers are making a lot of changes that I see, you know, through walkthroughs every day. So I'm really happy and proud of them for their work in that area. For community engagement, as you know, one of our school goals is to have the students become more involved in the community and to be, just participate in more community activities, be a part of the community. So our student council will be going to Cornerstone Nursing Home. Coming up soon. And they're going to just spend a couple hour, I think it's an hour. Actually, they're going to spend an hour just working, playing games with some of the residents and just contributing to society. So that's something we're really excited about. Started moving into that direction. We also have our spring concert and art show coming up on April 17th at six o'clock in the gym. So we're really looking forward to that. Our new chorus club will be singing. So that's going to be new and exciting. They're really excited about it. We have a lot of extracurricular activities going on. We have, our jump rope club is ending on Monday. If you're around, you want to come see the jump rope show, it starts at, it's going to start at 3:30. Actually, they changed the date time before, after I put this in. We also are offering a karate club for students in K through three. We've had a huge turnout. We have like almost 20 kids doing that. And we also, it's not in here because it started after I submitted this. We also have an art club for K to four that's starting for four weeks. They're going to work on different art projects. And our track team, middle school track team has started up on April 1st. So we have over 20 students doing track. So we have lots of activities going on, but we. So we have lots of activities going on, but we have so much participation, so it's great. Um, I just wanted to mention that we're continuing to work on mindsets. Um, during our all-school meetings, we always reflect on having positive mindsets and how to nurture our brains and nurture ourselves physically. So um, that's still going on, we just had a um, our, just on Monday, we had our all-school meeting about the importance of physical fitness and getting up and moving. And our new mascot um, came, so the students are going to name the mascot um, in the coming weeks. So they got to meet the mascot and now they have lots of ideas for names, so we're gonna let them decide on the name. So that will come in my, before. Yeah, they were so.
I, I saw the video.
Where is the video?
It's on um, their Facebook page, yeah, that's great. Nick did a great job. The announcer.
All right, thank you, Michelle.
Yeah.
Um, and now let's move on to the special services report.
Um, kind of quiet, I didn't do all Michelle stuff, but um, you know, when I wrote this report, I didn't have the state indicator information on it, but I would have put it in here. Um, but you know, we uh, completed all of our progress reports, uh, sent those up uh, for student IEPs. Report cards went out. As Mary, um, Michelle mentioned, we were at the uh, SAU Live Professional Development Day yesterday. Um, a lot of really interesting things, uh, best practices for UDL. Um, additionally, our EAs did some extra training, um, about helping to build resilience in kids. Um, as well as um, taking a deeper dive into the overall process for special education, so that's interesting for them to learn. Um, as Meredith mentioned, SAS testing is going up, so um, our end, we're getting all the accommodations set for students who require accommodations for that testing. And then, of course, it's always exciting when students are heading over to um, high schools. We have the special education transition meeting set up, which is where they go over and meet their new case manager and guidance counselor in the same school. It's always exciting, so those meetings are set. Really all that's, otherwise, special education is pretty quiet, which is how I like it.
Good, all right, great, thank you. Now let's move on to the finance report.
Matt. Thank you, um, so the year-to-date expenditure and revenue reports are in board docs. Um, currently, we're tracking to finish the year with an unreserved fund balance of approximately fifty thousand dollars. Um, that's based on our expenditures and surplus revenue. So uh, real, really no changes from last month and we are tracking well. Uh, we, we do expect the same budget through the end of this um, fiscal year. Um, however, of course, as I always notes, uh, there is the caveat that we do have three months remaining, so um, that balance could change if we have any unanticipated expenditures. Uh, additionally, I just, um, I did include the um, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, um, annual financial report on board docs. Um, this is the um, the final published report that Plazek and Sanderson provides us. As you know, um, I had previously reviewed those results in the fall. Um, however, they've um, gone through the, you know, the, the remaining um, process of writing the report, finalizing it. I, I included the, you know, management discussion, discussion and analysis. We got um, the um, post-employment benefits, um, valuation, that's conducted by an actuary. Um, and this is the uh, final result, no change from those preliminary results in the fall. Um, if you recall, we received no findings, um, material weaknesses or deficiencies as part of that audit.
Nope, great. All right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
And now let's move on to continuing business, is there any continuing business here?
There's not.
There's not, okay. And new business?
So personnel will do it non-public, but we can do the order bid on the replacement.
Yeah.
So the um, the bid process um, has concluded for the proposed um, roof replacement project. Um, bids were sent directly to six qualified vendors, um, all six attended the walkthrough and submitted bids. Um, I will note that um, our new um, free consultant, Will Hodge, um, wrote those specifications that we included in the RFP. Um, he also attended the walkthrough with the vendors, um, and then he, and he also reviewed um, the bids that we received. Um, so we are recommending award of bid to MJ Murphy and Sons um, in the amount of forty-three thousand dollars um, for the uh, roof replacement project. And um, as you know, we plan to utilize roof expendable trust, that was the express purpose of that trust. Um, what is for that, that roof? I'll also note that this was the uh, the shingle roof above us. Um, there's one small flat section where our um, our ventilation um, unit is out back. Um, it's in decent enough shape that we were not, um, they're going to uh, do some small repairs. But at some point, we'll need to replace, that's a rubber roof, it's about twenty by twenty. Um, so we um, that was not part of this scope. However, it's something we'll need to do at some point, really, it makes sense to wait until we had replaced the unit because otherwise we'll have to remove the unit to replace the roof and it's, it's quite large. Um, so that's, that is the um, the plan. Um, we do have um, a balance of um, fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars in that expendable trust, so um, we're hopeful that when that time comes, um, we'll be able to use that remaining fourteen thousand dollars um, to um, to complete that project. If it comes in less, we'll, we'll return it to the town. Um, we won't have a roof project for quite some time. Um, or if it comes in under, then um, we can include it as part of the actual replacement of that thing.
And uh, Will, he's, he's happy with MJ Murphy as well?
Yes, yeah, uh, so he um, he was hoping to make it to this meeting, unfortunately, it looks like he uh, can't, but um, he's familiar with the company, he, he called them, um, had a discussion. Um, we also um, spoke to the um, consultant ARM, who we um, had previously worked with. Um, and they were, they were kind enough to provide their um, take on the um, you know, free of charge as well. They, um, and they were, they were comfortable with the company as well.
All right, that sounds good.
Do we have to make a motion?
So we are asking for a motion.
Make a motion to award their roof replacement bid to MJ Murphy and Sons in the amount of forty-three thousand dollars.
I'll second that motion.
And all in favor? Thank you.
Let's see.
So next thing, the possible special meeting. So just looking at possibilities for that week of April fourteenth, while we're all here, I just thought in the event that we are ready to appoint a principal candidate, I just would like to have a date or two available um, for us to work from. So I'm wondering about the afternoons of the sixteenth or seventeenth. Could be the Wednesday and Thursday.
Well, not before thirty.
Okay.
Really hard to do either, you know, like.
Okay.
Sixteenth, I probably can't do, uh, seventeenth, I can do.
Which time can I have it, because we have our spring concert at six o'clock?
Before thirty, yeah. Okay, so please pencil in the seventeenth, then we'll confirm that uh, once the committee is ready to move the process forward to that stage.
Okay.
Thank you. And we do have a, a talk on the Tuesday next week. Yes, that is not on this list, but that is your, the next meeting would be the search committee meeting on, yes, Tuesday the eighth.
All right, um. Have we?
Next meeting date.
Yes, the list of upcoming meetings.
So yeah, Operations Committee meeting is May seventh, and then our school board meeting will be Thursday, May eighth. All right, so now let's go into non-public. Make a motion to enter non-public at five twelve PM. Oh, sorry, you have to. Sorry about that.
You still need the motion, you're, that you're, you have to run.
Second, second. And Alex, Becky?
Yes.
And Lauren?
Yes.
Okay, so are we live?
I'm sorry, sorry. I mean, I've forgotten.
I almost forgot too, so.
That wouldn't be non-public.